All right, I call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. Uh, still a roll call, uh, roll call please.
Charles Cooper.
Yeah.
Becky Duncan.
Here.
Jenny Ledbetter.
Here.
Vanessa Matthews.
Here.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Here.
All present.
All right, three minutes.
Regular meeting December 2018. Be it remembered that the Board of Mayor and Alderman met in regular monthly session Monday, December 10th, 2018 at 6:00 PM at City Hall in Jamestown, Tennessee, when the following proceedings were had and entered to record to live. Present and presiding, the honorable Lyndon Baines, Mayor, Gail Dishman, City Recorder, and a roll call by City Recorder calling mirrors of the board were present. Charles Cooper, Becky Duncan, Jenny Ledbetter, Vanessa Matthews, and Elizabeth Pendergrass. Mayor Baines called the meeting to order and welcomed everyone for attending. The minutes from the previous meeting were read and on a motion by Jenny Ledbetter, seconded by Charles Cooper, the board on a roll call vote approved the minutes for November 2018. On a motion by Elizabeth Pendergrass, seconded by Charles Cooper, the board on a roll call vote approved the special call minutes for September 24th, 2018. Mayor Baines then asked, "Were there citizens with grievances or any other business?" And there were none. Mayor Baines then gave an update on all city projects. He stated that the sewer project downtown was moving along quickly. He then stated that a divided door with a teller window was being installed in the front office, and that would add another payment, a pay counter inside for the customers. He concluded with the report that the meetings that he attended and would attend before Christmas. Tom Bennett with Bennett Associates gave the engineer report. Bob Lane, the city building inspector, gave the building and codes report. Bailey Alred was absent, there's a typo in yours. On a, on a motion by Elizabeth Pendergrass, seconded by Charles Cooper, the board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approve ordinance 1820 on second and final reading. On a motion by Charles Cooper, seconded by Elizabeth Pendergrass, the board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approve Lakeside Builders for the THDA housing grant as low bidders for the, for $33,125 for the Deanna Garrett house. On a motion by Elizabeth Pendergrass, seconded by Jenny Ledbetter, the board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved, approved Clark Brothers Construction for the THDA housing grant for $31,600 for the Janet Hood house. On a motion by Elizabeth Pendergrass, seconded by Jenny Ledbetter, the board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved Clark Brothers Construction for the THDA housing grant for $32,810 for the Sarah Threed House. Contingent upon THD approval that there was no conflict of interest with the Threed House since Ms. Threed was in, was an employee of the City of Jamestown. With no further business, on a motion by Elizabeth Pendergrass, seconded by Becky Duncan, the board voted to adjourn.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I think a motion approved.
Motion made by Mr. Cooper, ready discussion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Matthews. Roll call vote please.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Jenny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
All right, does anybody, any citizens have any grievances they want to bring in front of the board? If not, we'll move on. Uh, report from city mayor, uh, sewer project again is almost done, will be done with it here very soon. Uh, they're working, uh, manhole cover right now, Tom. And that should be, it should be done about what, the end of the week?
I'd say the end of the month.
The end of the month, which has only got a couple of weeks left. Uh, very, like I said in the work session, these guys have been a pleasure to work with, really good, uh, very courteous to the citizens. I've had some citizens say that they've been very courteous to them. I went to a meeting also with, uh, me and Steve McCoy did over about the, uh, highway project through, uh, Petrus County, and they're moving along. We're top three on the list right now in our, our region for the 127 extension. We talked with the engineers about the airport, everything's moving around real well down there. Uh, as of right now, with the government shutdown at the federal level, the FAA may get back with this, and they're saying right now, no later than the end of February, no earlier than the end of February. The worst, if it gets, they're saying if it gets done before then, then it could get before, but they're saying it'll probably be the end of February before we find anything out from the FAA on the 100% grant on that. Let's see, anything else? I think that was all I had. So we'll go to, to Mr. Minion with the city engineer report.
Well, I think you hit pretty much everything on the sewer project after this my update for tonight, so it will be, uh, pretty much done by the end of the month so that we can resubmit, uh, for next year's CDBG project. All the pipe works complete, they're just wrapping up the manhole rehabilitations and then some paving and some cleanup items, so expect all that to be done, uh, nobody in this month, and then we'll have a new application due for, uh, the next submission in, mid, late February.
All right, any questions for Mr. Redd? All right, next on there is the city building inspector, Mr. Lane, please.
I'll have two or three things, of course, everybody can see a handful of harvest buildings coming on. We got a little three model going on, they're up here with the post office. I've been up here this afternoon, working on code design, and a, a real problem I'm having in Jamestown is unsafe structures, like if a house burns. So, I'll bring it through the planning commission, I'm going to introduce a, a proposed ordinance that will deal with unsafe structures, where we can have a timeframe we can put on them, and I think it'll also help the property owners in dealing with their insurance companies. A lot of times if an insurance company knows there's a deadline, or this person's going to get in trouble, it will expedite that process a little bit. But right now, all we have is a building code that calls for 50% of the structure, and we don't have a timeframe or anything, so I'm going to, I'm going to bring something to the planning commission, some examples or, or ordinance one, and that'll be in front of here hopefully in a couple of months or so, and see if we can't do something with some of these. That would be, that would be fire, uh, structural issues, wind, anything where a, a house gets damaged to the point where it can't be lived, and it just sits there and can't get cleaned up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lane. City attorney report, Mr. Alred.
Um, I gave you guys early this evening the workshop, um, what I had been working on, which is a updated policies and procedures, uh, for the city. Um, we addressed, uh, in November, the, the changes in clarity on the health insurance reimbursement, so, um, that whole thing kind of prompted a, a redo of, of our policies and procedures that needed quite a bit of attention, so, um, I provided you guys that first draft, we'll be working on that intensely over the next couple of months. Um, so, again, let me know if you guys have any questions in the meantime, and the other thing is I am working on, Steve McCoy gave me a couple of title searches, um, that I have working on, that's, uh, in regard to some city road questions, so, trying to get to the bottom of that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Alred. All right, we have no old business, so we'll start into new business. Number one, is approval to send out the RFQs, request for qualifications for building inspector. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Duncan, ready discussion? Do I have a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Ms. Pendergrass. All right, roll call vote please.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
J- Jenny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
Number two, approval to send out RFQs, request for qualifications for city judge. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Ms. Ledbetter, ready discussion? Do I have a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Ms. Pendergrass. Roll call vote please.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Jenny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
Number three is approval to send out RFQs, request for qualifications for city attorney. Do I have a motion to approve?
We have to do all three at the same time?
We don't have to, but right now, Intas is kind of pushing that we change every few years, and we're just trying to get ahead of the game, that's what we're trying to do, so.
So do we normally do all three at the same time?
Normally.
Kind of a new practice.
The last time we just done, yeah, we just done the city attorney and building inspector every last time.
Yeah.
So we need to go ahead and do this, since we didn't do it twice?
If you want to, that's up to you, if you want to make a motion.
You all need to use the microphone, we can't hear what your mom would have said.
Sorry, the question that I asked is, do we do these all at the same time? That's what we're trying to figure out, and that's what we're trying to get up to date with, not that we don't want anybody to hear anything, we're just trying to get to see if we do them all at the same time, and he said last time that they done the building inspector and the city attorney. Sorry, I don't mean to speak so low. So, are they on?
Yes.
And it just shows that we're in compliance?
Yeah, it just shows we're in compliance.
Is it required?
Right now, when I went to, I talked to Intas, they're saying that they're going, it's going to become a requirement every two years now, probably.
Is it required now?
Not now, but it will be. So I ask again, do I have a motion?
It can wind up being the same person, it's showing, that we put it out there.
Right. All right, fail, lack of motion. All right, number four, approve ordinance 1830, that, uh, specification installation of natural gas services, and change of town gas department highlighted areas on the paper, the 13th is being added. Uh, Scotty, discuss this during the work session, you got anything else you want to add to it, Scotty? Okay. Do I need a motion to, to approve?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 1830.
Motion made by Ms. Matthews.
I second.
Seconded by Ms. Ledbetter. Roll call vote please.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Jenny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
All right, motion passed. Number five is discussion and approval of vacancies at the sewer plant to advertise applications. Lee Latham retired on December the 31st, 2018, from, uh, reading water meters. Bradley Wilson, that worked at the sewer plant, was transferred to water meter reader position, and then left an opening at the water plant. This is just, uh, advertised for, uh, a position at the sewer plant.
I make the motion.
Motion made by Ms. Ledbetter, ready discussion? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Who seconded it?
Thank you.
Ms. Duncan. I was reading while you talked. All right, roll call vote.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Jenny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
Number six, discussion and approval to move Brittany Whinneyham to full-time city clerk, court clerk, from part-time due to the fact that Tabitha Payne did not make the 90-day probation period.
I have a question.
Yes.
According to the code, family employment restrictions, no member of any employee's family shall be hired to work within the same city department unless formally approved by the Board of Mayor and Alderman, was Brittany approved formally by the board?
Yes, they would.
It was not in the minutes?
Yes, she was, back in, mm, November.
No, I mean, she was voted to hire her, but that's not what the code states. The code states that the fact that she's related would have to be addressed and formally approved by the board.
Yes.
I can't find anything that says that that happened.
Well.
And I've sat down in the middle of it, so, I mean, uh, I was literally sworn in in the middle of it, so I abstained from voting on it. It was brought to my attention, and that's why I'm asking if the, all the steps were, uh, done.
The thing of it was, that nobody, uh, far as family members had no, nothing to say on it, it was the board members that had to say on it, and me. Uh, the board member, uh, the person that had anything, family-wise, did not have anything to say about it, and that was stated. And so, as far as I'm concerned, as far as, as Brittany being a family member, we have family members still working here, and I don't see a problem with, if it becomes a problem, then we deal with it.
Is, um, is Gail, are you her supervisor?
I am, but we have put internal controls in.
Yes.
Carolyn checks her out, Carolyn has been training her and helping her, and Michelle has come back in and works maybe two or three hours a week, helping her with the court, running the court and stuff. Anything else, like, uh, uh, service orders? Ms. Darlene is back, and she, she goes back over them with her, or if she has questions. Learning her or training her on anything, yeah, I do, I am hands-on with that, if she has questions, but as far as, like, um, we do the ACHs, people fill out the ACHs to have that quick taken out their phone. Brittany is up front, so she will get those and put them in, Rebecca comes behind her and signs off that she want, put everything in and stuff. We've put internal controls in because of that. Uh, Brittany is my niece by marriage, yes.
It, it was not, it is in the policy, is that correct? It was just not brought yet, it was not brought to our attention.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a problem for her.
I did bring it.
It was.
Yeah, it was, let me speak first.
Yeah.
Hey, so I sat in on the interviews, okay? And before, we put, we gave the three that we thought was the most qualified, and it was stating in a meeting that who she was, and that she refrained from having any advice or anything, and it was stating right here, in it, with all of us.
Right.
Okay, was it stated in the minutes, according to Jenny?
That should have been, that became, that was before she come. So, and that was the night that she was voted in, so she refrained from that, because she had no idea what was going on.
Yep.
But it was brought to the board's attention, even in the workshop and on our meeting, so, and there was no discussion about it or anything, and everybody voted that, to hire her.
If it's in the policy, we need to go by it, it's my only thing, so it needs to be stated.
No, and I understand that, I understand that, but the thing is, is we were all present, and we all talked about it, and it was brought to the board's attention, so, that's what I'm stating, it was brought to the attention.
And the one thing that I want to say is, if you're going to start, because half this town is related to each other, and if you're going to do one, you're going to have to start going down the line and start firing people right and left.
If it's in the policy, then that's what we go by.
Well, if you want to fire everybody, that's fine, but.
Nobody's talking about firing anybody.
No, but you're all saying, well, we can't hire this one because of her family, we can't fire this one because of her family, it's the same thing. I'm just saying, you can't sit here and say, well, just because it's this person, we're going to let them go, but this person we're fine with. If it's in the policy, like Ms. Pendergrass said, we approved, everybody approved it, I didn't, because I don't vote, but I don't see any problem with it. If it becomes a problem, then I will take care of it personally.
Um, I don't have an actual problem with, I leave Brittany to pieces, that's not the issue. If we instituted a policy that said someone directly related would not work under, you know, their supervisor would not be related to them, when those policies are generally put in place, then people are just moved, they're not fired, because.
Okay, now what do you, what do you plan on moving somebody if we ain't got the money to move?
Well, I'm not saying that we are, I didn't introduce a new policy.
Right, I agree with that, I agree, I agree with that. I agree that's reason, me and Mr. Alred talked about this, and about this, the personnel policies and stuff, and we need to have this straightened out, because these policies, the good old boy system needs to end.
Well, that's exactly the, what was brought to me.
Yeah.
The concern that families being hired into positions that other people don't have the same, uh, op, uh, opportunity for.
Well, there were 21 applicants give in for this job. There was 21 applicants. We read through, what, 12? Something like that.
Some wouldn't call back.
Yeah, some.
To set up an interview.
Right. And, uh, so, out of that, we picked, uh, the top two, well, we actually picked three, but we kept one in case, and that's what we did, but Gail didn't have nothing to do with any.
And nobody's saying that Gail did anything wrong.
No, I know that, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying for the record, that she didn't have anything to say with it. When it came to us making decisions, it was more me and Elizabeth made the decision on the interviews, and so.
And those was, the, the three that we talked about was the best applicants at that time, because a lot of them only wanted part-time.
Right.
And Ms. Havith was already working full-time, and, uh, there was a couple that wanted to move closer to home because they had kids, so, and that's how we narrowed those down.
Right.
Um, so, not saying that one was better than the other.
No.
By all means, that's not what I was saying, so please don't take that out of context.
All right. Do we have about any more discussion or a motion to move Brittany to full-time, Brittany Whinneyham to full-time city clerk, court clerk, from part-time?
I do have just one question, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Um, was Gail involved in firing Tabitha?
No.
May I add something real quick, please?
Yeah.
Would you suggest that in voting for this, that it is, just for a matter of record, just state it in the record, understanding that she is related by marriage?
Right, yeah.
Just state that in the motion, please?
Yeah.
Just so we'll have it as a matter of record.
The, uh, firing of Ms. Payne was totally on me, that was my decision, and we'll just, we'll keep it at that, because I don't think personal things should be brought up at the meetings, as far as personal reasons. All right. Now, do we have any more, you know, motion or anything to hire Brittany as full-time city clerk or court clerk?
I make the motion to hire her full-time as the, uh, city clerk.
Motion made by Ms. Pendergrass, seconded by Mr. Cooper.
And part of that motion is.
And part of that motion is that we are under the understanding that she is related to Ms. Gail Dishman, and that there has been, um, things put in place to where she's not overseeing every part that she does, that there's other people in the office that is going behind her, so that way it's not held responsibly for Ms. Gail Dishman to make those decisions, that has to be brought to the mayor.
Right. And there's also other ways that a lot of people don't know, but I check on things too here, I go behind people and check things too, is this not just in the office, I, I think I'm here every day, all day long, because I check things too, just to be on the safe side. All right, we have a motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Jenny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
Motion passed. Discussion and approval either open back up the part-time, uh, clerk position for interviews, or to approve the third choice on which the list of interviews that took place on in November, and she is still interested, and her name is Nancy Wallace, I talked to her today, she's interested in part-time, uh, she has a very nice resume and, uh, job experience, so, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
To open, do either, let me make this clear, either to, uh, interview, or do you want to do interviews, or do you want to do?
Oh, no, hire the third person on, Ms. Wallace.
She makes a motion about bringing up the third person, the third choice. Any discussion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Duncan. Roll call vote please.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Jenny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Against.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
All right. Number eight, discussion and resolution of the new CDBG grant sewer project. This is a resolution authorized application to Community Development Block Grant from the Tennessee Department of Economic Community Development, address, addresses sewer system needs, where is the health and the welfare of the community adversely affected by the sewer system problems. The Mayor and Alderman, Board of Alderman of Jamestown believe in the correction of the sewer problems, it should be a priority, and the City of Jamestown is eligible for financial assistance, correct issues at the main pump station for a Community Development Block Grant administered by the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development. Jamestown, Tennessee, eligible for maximum grant of $525,000 under Community Development Grant, but, uh, Jamestown agrees to pay 19% match required to grant, great, uh, grant rate is setting at 7%, plus 4%, three-star bonus, with funds of the water fund totaling $123,150, with a total of $648,000, about $648,150,000. Therefore, resolved that the Mayor and Council, that the Mayor authorized and direct to execute submit applications, Community Development Block Grant to the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development, in order to address the sewer problem in the community, enter into necessary agreements with Tennessee Department of Economic Community Development and other designated agencies, and receive administrator's say grant funds, execute the necessary agreements administrative services without further action by the Council, examine upon approval of funding grants. The Mayor and Board of Alderman hereby authorize the amount not less than 19% of the total project serving matching funds, secure the community block grant, these matching funds require from the water and sewer fund. Do I have an emotion, Cooper?
May I make a correction to this resolution?
Yes. Yes.
Where it says in whereas three, where it says to correct issues with the main pump station?
Yes.
Can we correct it to say, or amend it to say, to correct issues with the sewer system?
Yes, yeah.
What paragraph?
Whereas number three.
Yeah, number three, yeah. Because I meant the main pumping station, that's right, number three.
We're changing that to say what?
Sewer system.
Sewer system.
And funds coming from where?
The water and sewer fund. The matching funds will be acquired from the water and sewer fund.
Resolution, here it says nine thirty, I'm sorry.
Nine thirty?
Yes. Resolution number nine thirty.
Resolution nine thirty. All right, do I have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept.
Motion made by Mr. Cooper, have any discussion? If not, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Taken by Ms. Pender. Roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Jeanne Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Against.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four.
Four, four, none against, sorry.
There we go. All right. All right, we got the bills coming up next. Excuse me. Number nine. The November bills was four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-five and ten cents. The December bills... Oh, okay, we'll do the November bills first, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and ten cents. Do I have a motion to approve the November bills?
I make the motion.
Motion made by Ms. Ledbetter, any discussion? Do I have a second?
I second it.
Seconded by my Ms. Pendergrass. Roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Jeanne Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
All right, for the December bills, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. Need a motion to approve the December bills?
I make the motion.
Motion made by Ms. Pendergrass, any discussion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Matthews.
Becky Duncan.
Becky Duncan, I'm sorry. Roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Jeanne Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
All right, we move on to financials. December's financials. November, I'm sorry. Yep. November's financials. The general fund, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, twenty-one dollars and eighty-one cents. Water and sewer, one million, one, one hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and six cents. The natural gas fund is one million, four hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents with a grand total of two million, seven hundred and sixteen dollars, two hundred and sixty-nine and forty-seven cents. On November financials, I have a motion to approve.
I make the motion.
Motion made by Ms. Pendergrass, any discussion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Taken by Ms. Ledbetter. Roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Jeanne Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
All right, financials for December. In the general fund, two hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. In the water and sewer fund, one million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and forty-six cents. In the natural gas fund, one million, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents with a grand total of two million, seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and seventy-one cents. Do I have a motion to approve December?
I make the motion.
Motion made by Ms. Pendergrass, any discussion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Duncan. Roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
All right.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Jeanne Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
All right. Do we have anything else? If not, I make, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Make the motion by Ms. Duncan.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Ledbetter, everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.